Oracon City Council Meeting to Order, Clerk please call the roll.
Forrest Fromme.
Here.
Lisa Sullivan.
Here.
Jim Bansma.
Here.
Marie Fenske.
Here.
Christine Schmitz.
Here.
Bryce Remy.
Here.
Will you all please stand and join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. In the great republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion act on the minutes of July twenty-third and the one from August fourteenth?
Second.
Any questions on the minutes? Any comments? All right, if not, Clerk please call the roll.
Jim Bansma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
I'm going to speak.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
All right, I was just asking Scotty if he was here for public appearances. Nope. So we just have, go for it Jerry.
Jerry Boyd, lifelong.
You don't have to stand up, you're cool, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Jerry Boyd, lifelong resident of Oracon. I'm here to shed some light on action item thirteen tonight to relocation to kayak station. I am not here to pick up fights at the city hall. I am here only to share some information with a group of people who some of you were not here when we made the original decision with kayak station in two thousand and twenty-one. That being we have a new mayor, we have a new public works supervisor, and there's lots of new faces on this council. So I believe you could gain something by sharing the history of the original decision-making process. Safety is always job number one. Safety was also number one when we decided where we wanted to go with the station. And since there was already an existing kayak launch that taxpayer money pays to never get money for, some committee made a very intelligent decision where we should put this new facility. It ended up being Bowling Green. When we came along in two thousand and twenty-one, we looked at what they decided, we had our own logic, and within a meeting or two, we said, we agree with the original decision. Bowling Green is the place for the kayak launch, and it's also the best location for the kayak station. It just made sense, because launch was the station. Another compelling reason for safety is we thought you gain something by having a specialized location. If you get involved with a typical boat launch, a boat launch brings a lot of complications. People are now trying to launch an eighteen-foot speedboat, it's on a twenty-five, twenty-six-foot trailer. Some operators are experienced, some could not drive a pickup truck into this room. It gets very frustrating to watch some people try and launch at a boat launch. So we thought in the best interest of having our own specialized locations away from a boat launch. We thought it was very beneficial for us to have responsibility separated between the individual user and global issues affecting the river. An example of that, we would expect a private individual to use his best judgment, his best actions as to what he wanted to do with that kayak. If he decided he wanted to go in the rain, we might think, not necessarily the best of ideas, you're not going to have the best of experiences. But if he wanted to go in the rain, we let him go in the rain. The major issue, the global issue that affected total overall safety was going to be controlled by somebody in this room. Major issue, bogs. Bogs have been a major issue for the Oregon marsh for the last three, four, five, ten years. We thought it was very probable that a kayak, a canoe, anybody could be confronted by a massive bog floating down. If there was a lot of bog floating, we would expect someone in this room to say, time out, kayak station, let me shut down. If at the end of the year, the water becoming cold, we would expect someone to say, hey, we don't want the kayak station running in the fifteenth of March. We don't run it the fifteenth of November, the water is too cold, if something happens, if people are at risk, let's shut it down. Josh did that last year. No problem, no problem. This year, we had six inches of rain one day, four inches of rain the next day, we had very fast water. Somebody in this room made a very intelligent decision, let's shut it down. It's important to note that none of those two conditions had any relationship at all to the location of the kayak station. Kayak station did not control the bog, the kayak station did not control the water stream. That was controlled by something else, the location of the station itself had no bearing on them. Some other considerations. If you're near water, most people are very anxious to see, is there a lifeguard on duty? Gives you a whole sense of security, lifeguards. I think we have a lifeguard. If we stay this side of the dam, if we keep the people on the Oracon Marsh, you know what our lifeguard is? It's called palmetory. There is not an hour goes by when there's not somebody up on Palmetory overlook. And what are the people on Palmetory overlook doing? They're looking and they're listening. And when they're looking, they're probably going to see somebody like this. When they're listening, they're probably going to see somebody say, ow. They're probably going to be listening to somebody pounding their paddle against the canoe saying, I'm in danger. To me, that's, that's a lifeguard. We get it only if we stay north of the dam. We keep the people where we can see them. Another safety measure is if we stay this side of the dam, we've got a business called the Blue Heron Landing. Their job is to get as many people as often as they can up into the marsh. And when they're in the marsh, what are those people doing? You're questioning? Let's take advantage of those two resources. We get it only if we stay north of the dam. How about something real simple? If I am going to have my grandson with me, if I'm going to have anybody, including myself, and I tip this kayak over, you want to tip over in water that's measured in inches, like six inches, ten inches, twelve inches, eighteen inches? Maybe at the most, two feet? Or would you rather be on the river basin when the water is probably going to be averaging four, five, six feet? If I tip over, and I'm holding my grandson, I wouldn't be standing in water to my knees, not having water run into my arms. Very common sense stuff I'm talking about here. Okay, another major issue is branding. We've got four partners with you, city of Oracon being the most important, we've got the friends at the Oracon Marsh, we've got the D and N, and we've got the memorial person, myself. What's Oracon's brand? I believe it's Oracon by name, Marsh by fame. You should be concerned at every angle, people, to promote Oracon, to promote the Marsh. If it's good for the Marsh, it's good for Oracon. The other significant partners is the friends, they contributed significant money to this project. And their name says their brand, Oracon Marsh Education Center. Another partner, the Public Natural Resources, they control the water, they control the shoreline. Their job is to take care of eleven thousand acres of a wetland of international importance. It's their lifeblood. They are very concerned about the Oracon Marsh. The last partner, myself, the memorial was given in my wife's name and my son's. My son was an neighboring neighbor on the east side, west side of Oracon. My wife was an adjoining neighbor on the west side of Oracon. The Marsh meant everything to my son Ryan, it meant everything to my wife. I want to keep the current location, so we keep kayaks on the Oracon Marsh. How about tourism? It's always about this, people. What are we doing to help our merchants make some of this? Bowling Green, they're about one block walking distance from downtown Oracon. All the merchants get to share equally in whatever traffic that generates. If we go someplace else, there's no businesses there other than the playful goose, I've got no problem with the playful goose. But are we kind of favoring one of our businesses, and most of the businesses are getting no good out of it? How about John Deere? Any city outside would love to have John Deere. We should be promoting John Deere, we should be showing off John Deere at every angle we can do. You can drive around and look at it. A lot of them have special events once every month, once every year, not too often, you can take a factory tour. If you launch the boat at Bowling Beach, you are paddling for two rocks, and you can reach out and touch the John Deere Oracon. It is very impressive, it's very compelling, let's do what we can to support a world-class organization called John Deere Oracon. Convenience, I don't know if you all aware of that, but if you want to take a kayak, you don't make the reservation, you get to use the kayak based on availability. If you keep it where it is, Highway thirty-three, Highway E, and Kansas Street are all within a glance. Yep, there's canoes available, yep, I'm going to go canoe. If you move in someplace else, like rumor has it, River Bend, you got to drive two point four tenths of a mile, make that determination. Two point four tenths of a mile, you got to drive by your way, see if those kayaks are available. I think it's inconvenient. How about restrooms? You have now spent two hours, four hours in the pit of a kayak. When your feet touch ground, you're looking, most likely, nature's saying, I'm looking for relief. We want it to be running water, we want it to be within a reasonable distance. Bowling Green has restrooms within forty yards. The other place to think of going, maybe three hundred yards, depending upon where you actually end up looking. Emergencies depend upon feet, not direction. I think the real issue here that we're facing tonight in the relocation of the kayaks is not necessarily safety. I think it's vandalism, I think it's maintenance. If it's indeed vandalism, where do you think most vandalism is going to occur? In downtown Oracon? That's got lights all over? Or something outside of town that has no lights, got no visibility, you can't see another building? If vandalism is your concern, I'm hard pressed to think being out there is going to improve vandalism. Now, we do have a legitimate issue, and that is maintenance. We've had a day one problem with kayaks being pulled on concrete sidewalks. That creates a problem. I guarantee you, my work, give me a hundred dollars, give me two hours worth of labor, and I make the concrete kayak conflict disappear. You put four cedar posts that's got the holes in with the branches where the other mating part comes along, you run some nice three-quarter inch rope along the east side of the sidewalk that runs north and south. Guess what? The people can get the disciple. Four posts, a hundred fifty feet of rope, and a day one problem disappears. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, next on the agenda, we have the Personal and Finance Committee report, Forrest.
Uh, Personal Finance Committee met regular session, um, everyone, or, sorry, myself and Vance were present. Schmitz absent, no public appearances. We approved our July minutes, and we approved a service agreement for CB, or CBVG grant. Uh, we approved our bill for July, set our next meeting for Monday, September sixteenth, here at City Hall at six P M. And adjourned at six oh three.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Jim with the Public Works.
Public Works Development Committee meeting was called order at six P M by Chairperson Jim Bansma. Members present, Bansma, Fenske, and Schmitz absent, members were not. Motion by Schmitz, second by Fenske to approve the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four minutes, all voting aye, motion carried. Public appearance non. Cody Vanderheide, Director of Public Works Utilities, provided a monthly update on the U T W and the Water, Wastewater Departments. Discussion on sidewalk maintenance, of cutting and replacing sidewalks, future needs for the sidewalks. Set the next meeting for Thursday, September fifth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M at U T W conference room. Motion by Bansma, second by Schmitz, adjourned, all voting aye, meeting adjourned at six forty-five P M.
Thanks, Jim. Next we have Marie with the Public Safety Committee report.
Safety Committee met August thirteenth at six o'clock, uh, all members were present. Motion by Remy to approve minutes, all voted aye. We had a resident ask about U T V ordinance times, uh, to look into that and for to investigate parking by the Ice cream station for some safety issues. Discussion on pedestrian and bicycle safety, crosswalks, back-to-school pedestrian safety. Discussion about portable radar cycle with this department budget. Uh, Chief Versa provided a monthly update on the police department. Peter McRide an update on tabletop exercise that we had on August twentieth. Um, discussed the proposed bicycle program policy. We discussed kayak program policy with additional safety concerns. Um, and a motion by Remy, second by Fenske to move the kayaks to and the sheds to Riverbend Park, all voted aye, motion carried. Proposed an update to Chapter two sixty-six ordinance with direct seller's permit, further discussion needed, Remy will come back next month with more information. And motion to approve operator license that passed, and a motion to approve the bus fee uh, liquor license for the farmer's market department table dinner, and that passed. Next meeting, Mondays, September ninth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M at City Hall, and motion adjourned.
Thank you. Next we have Park and Recs Board.
Comment, comment.
Want to comment? Go ahead.
Going up to the top of the page as far as, uh, the president has requested the parking on North Cedar Street by Ice cream station to be investigated. Backing into angled parking is causing safety concerns. According to Oracon City ordinance, backing into a diagonal parking spot is against ordinance. I've been asked the police department a couple of times, especially on Salt Cedar Street, to uh, start issuing citations, and I don't call the citation as been issued yet, so. That's a forceful problem that could be easily corrected by directing the police chief to start enforcing it.
We didn't have discussion because it wasn't on the agenda, just to note that.
First time I heard of it as well. All right, I will grab that one after the meeting. You have anything else, Jim?
Oh.
All right. Next we have Park and Recs Board, Bryce.
Park and Rec was called at six P M by myself, uh, Remy, Sullivan, Boogie, and Hoy were present, Crull was absent. There was a motion that drew the last month's minutes, there was two public appearances. Cody gave a park report. Uh, Carson emailed me a rec report, then I shared it. Um, Drew gave a aquatics center report update, I gave an update on Friends of Oracon Parks fundraising. Um, we discussed changes to the rental rates of the Fisher Park buildings, since the dance hall doesn't exist, we'll bring that back later. Uh, we made a motion to approve the bicycle program. Um, we made a motion to approve the sign-ups for the bicycle program, and we made a motion to approve the kayak program. Kayak station, there was some discussion there. Uh, request of installation of venting system in nineteen ninety-nine Jersey Street building, no action, that has to go through the Public Works Development Committee. Same thing for the request for four large fans to be installed at nineteen ninety-nine Jersey Street building. Uh, review of park playgrounds for twenty twenty-five, we'll bring that back next month with Crull in attendance. Uh, no action on the band stage for Quanis Park. We set a special park board meeting for budget on Thursday, September twelfth, and a regular meeting on Tuesdays, September seventeenth, at six P M at U T W conference room. We adjourned at seven P M.
Thank you. Next we have the Plan Commission with Lisa.
We came together at six o'clock. Um, there was a motion passed for a zone change for our two residential. And then there was an approval, um, site plan review for the Mexican well at four oh two Red Street over here. And we adjourned at six thirteen.
Thank you. And then my report's going to be short. Just want to remind everyone that school starts a week from today. Um, this is the time of year, starting next week, where you're going to see kids walking up and down Lake Street, trying to cross in front of Marie's house, in front of my house, in front of Quick Trip. So I'm just going to ask, I see exactly zero people are watching online, but they'll eventually log in to see the highlights. Please be wary of the kids that are trying to cross the street before and after school. Uh, welcome back to all the kids. As a parent, I'm excited for you to go back to school. It's been a long summer with you, just kidding. And, uh, and, you know, it's, it's great to have everything back in motion, you know, volleyball and cross country and all that stuff. Football plays this Friday night, a home game here in town against Mayville, which is always exciting. So I'm just happy that, uh, you know, school's back, and let's just keep an eye out for them when they're all crossing the road. That's all I got. Uh, next on the agenda, we're going to be acting on Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, which is a resolution supporting F R A consideration of the city of Oracon's railroad crossing eliminating, elimination grant application.
We're applying for a grant in one of the we're looking at the railroad crossings in the city of Oracon, all of them. And, and so part of the grant application is for the city to show its support. And, um, you guys as a city council are showing their support by passing this resolution. We have already once attempted to apply for this grant, and it didn't work out. Um, we've got some very interested, uh, key players that are assisting us in this next time around, so we're very hopeful. It's a study for right now, and, um.
It's. Go ahead, yeah, we have the right guys here.
About three minutes.
You're going to start the clock on me?
No, I will.
So we went after this grant in twenty twenty-two, and not, ended up getting it, it was unsuccessful. Uh, but D O T has hired consultants to make Wisconsin more competitive in the federal space for railroad grants. So that consultant is directly helping myself and city staff rewrite the application refresh it, they think we have really strong chance. The outcome of this is going to be a study of all, all four or five of the railroad crossings to figure out how safety improvements could be implemented to each one of those to protect all of the vehicles and traffic of pedestrians and bicyclists, as we know, more may be traveling in the corridor. The ultimate idea is that with this study in hand, with the concepts that say, safety improvement X makes the most sense, we have some cost estimates for that stuff, we have some concept level engineering, civil designs for that stuff. We could pursue this grant in the next cycle, get the capital funding to implement those safety improvements. So that's the idea. This is all, uh, this grant is being funded out of the bipartisan infrastructure bill um, that Biden passed two years ago, I think, which still has funding for the next continuous couple of cycles. We want to take advantage of that, do the study, then get the construction done, which is the idea.
And it's for the crossings.
Correct. So it's the, the physical right of way where the railroad goes across to improve everything from the sidewalk to, um, the, if there's on-street parking, to the physical road.
So Valley Street, Hubbard, Clinton, E, because the Barstow one, I believe, was good, but it's part of the study anyways.
Still part of the study, though.
Yeah, it does, it could be further improved. It's the most safely prominent, um, traffic engineer.
I think million dollar question will be once this, you know, citizens hear about this grant is, or in the possibility of doing any kind of safety upgrades. Is it going to reduce wait times at all? The wait time by the, by the, I mean, that's the bane of the existence of people in work.
So the, the whole reason we went after this grant is, I've been hearing since I've been working with you all, that the railroad is an issue, and we want to try to solve some of the problems. And so this grant is aimed to help try and solve some of those problems. Is it going to resolve the fact that there's a switchyard in the middle of the city? No. Uh, but hopefully it could make some of those crossings more safe, and maybe improve the relationship between the city and the railroad to alleviate some of the existing issues that it was.
Thank you. I think that is important, yeah. I think they, don't they also, we also want them to stop going forward at night, right? But that needs to, they need to all be like with the armed crossing.
Correct.
That's a whole something.
If they're all protected, and they kick them, they don't go.
And that specifically cannot be addressed in this grant. That is a specific.
The outcome could still be that, right? But we need to explore all options.
Right. But we can't be pursuing this grant simply for that aspect of it.
We need to keep an open mind, and that might be the outcome as an alternative, but there are all the other alternatives.
And I don't think anyone has seen it.
And again, this was the second.
It was like two minutes.
Good job.
It was, uh, two minutes and thirty-seven seconds in the live clock. Thank you, Ben. You have any other questions, Lisa, Christine?
No.
All right, we have a motion up. If there aren't any questions, Clerk please call the roll.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Bansma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is acting on relocation of the free kayaks.
So I'd like to make a motion to move the kayaks out of Bowling Green Park for the moment, but then to pause, and we, we have to have some more discussion, I think, from what's going on, and I would like, um, Tesh to, Chief Tesh, to talk to the safety concerns that you discussed at the public safety building. Uh, but I do think that we would want to move it because of those concerns.
Hey, that's way too long of a motion.
Yeah, you just have to do the motion first.
Yeah, but I, I, I only have a little piece of paper, and I write really big. I can't.
The motion is to move the kayaks out of Bowling Green Park for safety concerns.
Due to safety.
There is no where.
Due to safety concerns to a location to be determined?
Yes.
I'll second, so I'll get the discussion. All right, I'll second.
Okay, Forrest, you seconded it?
Sure.
I didn't hear you, sorry.
Yeah, that's why I said I'm sorry first. Um, as far as the discussion goes, I don't know if we need a motion to remove them out of the Bowling Green Park, because in about two months, they're going to be pulled anyway for the season. Um, unless we're going to sit there and move them right away, I think there's some doubt points that Jerry Brian chose to public, um, minutes, but to reach point, Tesh had some points with Cody's first and C B concerns, put them in their relocation that go beyond just what Troy was, or Boyd was mentioning. Tesh, you want to speak into that right away?
I can't, I mean, I'm going to start right off, I am not against this kayak program at all. The issue that we have, when the water comes into Oracon and starts to narrow, the, the dumping of the water from the federal to the city, or to the state and down depends a lot on rain. We get a lot of rain, it can happen overnight, the water levels start to rise, the currents start to pick up. Um, can, our, um, swift water rescue is to find any water over one point one five, um, feet per second. In that respect, you walk at two point two, or one point one five miles an hour, you walk at two point two miles per hour. The Oracon Fire Department does not train in, does not have equipment, and we are, we are not trained to do swift water rescue. With that being said, I'm not saying that we're not going to jump in and try to help. My biggest problem is we have several kayaks dumped their own corner in what I call the St. Mountain Parking Lot in, in Launch. If they got that far and couldn't paddle, by the time they called the fire department, or even someone heard them, called the fire department, by the time we got people down there and got a boat in the water, you might as well say, in ten minutes, I'll say quick ten. in ten minutes, I'll say quick ten minutes, it might be fifteen minutes, they're already in the dam. Now we're doing a swift water rescue in the dam, which we're definitely not, not certified for. And quite truthfully, I don't know if I'd let the guys do that. I mean, we would end up with way bigger issues than what we started with. When he talked about the people at the Blue Deer Landing, Landing renting them, they know when the kayaks are gone, they know when the kayaks return. They can send people looking for them. The parks close at ten o'clock, but that doesn't mean that someone can't jump in them kayaks anytime they want. They're not monitored, they're not tagged out. So I could jump in at midnight, go for a kayak, and who here is gonna know they're out until the next day and they're missing? I do believe we're still missing one. They found one that got sucked through the dam, hopefully without a person, and then on the other side of the river. I think they need to be moved to a slack water, um, location. And when I mean slack water, that's just a stagnant, non-current location. I don't know if we're talking the old Ice House launch, or if we're talking the One Mile launch. I think that would be a great location for them. I just don't think they're in a perfect location for safety wise. That launch was built for people that own kayaks, who know how to kayak. Now we're giving them free for whoever wants to try to kayak. That's where I am a little nervous on where these kayaks.
Chief, you wanna explain, we know what Ice House and One Mile, you know, we know where they are, I know where they are, you know where, that's Chestnut Street.
Yeah, Chestnut.
And the Nebraska canoe launch. So they're on the marsh, they're north of the dam.
You get away from where everything tunnels together and the current starts to pick up. You're closer up in the marsh. And I don't think anyone really wants to kayak through Bowling Green Park and stare it on your wall, no matter what anyone thinks. I mean, that's great and everything, but they wanna get up into the marsh. So if you moved them up there, the chance of them getting drawn back into Horicon is a lot.
Some of the deepest water we have in town is in that stretch of river. It, it's not below the dam, it's above the dam. From pretty much where the dam face is up to about the Chestnut, or Chestnut Street Landing.
Yeah.
Five eight feet. Five, yeah. Yeah, some of it underneath the bridge we came through and we did the slow and awake Louise was somewhere in like the twelve foot range. I mean, nothing you can stand on, swift current.
You truthfully don't get into the water he was talking about until you get north of One Mile, if anyone knows where, where One Mile comes out, we used to be able to walk on that's where it starts to widen out, and that's actually where you start to get the salt. So the main ditch, the dredged main ditch where most people would go up and then spur off is, I would say, five to eight feet up until where the marsh, um, starts to start, I don't know if I'll say it that way, um, at One Mile. So anything in that main ditch you go over, you're over your hat. Um, and you gotta go along, along. I'm just, I'm saying as an aspect, safety to our members of Horicon Fire Department, trying to save someone and maybe some liability, and that's not for me to say that lawyers and bigger deal, but for our guys to try to save someone. It, it makes me nervous. It always has. Um, that's the only way I can come at it, is on the safety.
And that's what we discussed at public safety, that at public safety, we had mentioned taking it to Riverbend, but I'm totally open to it going somewhere if there's a more appropriate location that makes sense. I, I love the program as well. I definitely don't wanna lose it. I think it's a great thing to have. I think it's really good for Horicon. But I do think it's a program that's for people who are inexperienced and either have never kayaked or, or very frequently. So we should be aiming it to be user friendly.
You know, and is there a way we can, they can get them checked out, like of key fob or fob or something, where you call someone, get something, and X, Y, Z took it out? You know, now you're gonna rely on cops to check it at ten o'clock or dark, you know, where a business always knows when their kayaks are back.
Oshkosh and Onalaska have those kayak looking, like vending machines.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can do that.
Cause you don't know when they're out, where they're at, if someone stole them, you know, if someone stole them and then we go, we go looking. The front, the marsh is the big area, especially if you don't know where you're going at night, I mean.
For sure.
I guess the challenges on our side are, you know, obviously, like, it's not sustainable at this moment. So removing it from that park, I think, is probably safe. That, we're not gonna put it there, but we can think about putting it somewhere else. Um, we picked up multiple kayaks from self-rescues, so that kinda ties back into what you're saying. We found a lot of them in that same Mountain Park parking lot, Legion Park area, which is just above the dam. Um, I, I, I agree. I think it's hard to know, like, what the water conditions are at all times and modernity. We don't know, we don't get any kind of notifications when dams are opening, closing. If you have a rain event up on the north end, we may not know. I think just that close to the dam and in that deep water, that much current makes it kinda tough.
We actually did have a rescue the year before where someone got pinched under the, the dam or by the bridge by, um, they actually got wedged. It was, it was easy rescue, but they still couldn't get out. They got wedged between some log and stuff in the bridge.
And that's when it was dry.
What's that?
That was during the drought.
Yeah, so, yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I remember that one.
To add, uh, Cody, the mayor and I, that was the Friends of the Marsh yesterday, too. Uh, they did ask if we could consider picking a new location until they had a chance to meet with the board, but it seemed like they were opposed to stopping it at Bowling Green.
Are there any kayaks down there now?
No.
They're all gone, right?
We have two left. There, we are not putting them in right now until we figure out the safety side of this. It was a lot. We lost seven out of, or five out of seven kayaks. We lost in one day.
So right now, it's a, it's a matter of just removing the remaining ones and keeping them out.
Yeah, we're just, I guess, say it's like, what would be like, the way I understand it is to remove the kayak program from Bowling Green. Whereabouts to go in the future, I don't know.
But isn't that kinda finalizing that we are simply absolutely moving it? We haven't even really, I mean, I'd rather dive into it a little bit more before the next season rolls around, but I'll say definitely we are moving it. Definitely we're moving it, but we don't know where. I'd rather have something.
We've, as a council, changed things so many times, like my first two years, trick or treating was a hot topic, and we moved that up and right.
I think in moving, you said, is that what I meant every year?
Yeah, that's a nice way it is now, but just because you vote one way doesn't mean you can't change it later on. I mean, look at the ATV ordinance.
I just don't want.
It doesn't need to always be changed five hundred times, just saying.
I get that.
It's okay to totally think.
Well, I understand. I mean, maybe the vote, I mean, maybe we should just have the, we won't put the kayak out this year.
That's, that's kinda what I would go, and I mean, they're not out anywhere.
I guess we're saying safety concerns for that location. So, you know, are you taking that seriously or not? I guess the word's that. Do you feel like there is a safety concern there or not?
Yes.
From the Parks Board, too, we had a member who made a public appearance tonight that was surprised this happened. Um, it was on the agenda, but every time we try to talk about it, the parks have turned into Cody's job review. Um, so that is why it never made anywhere for parks. Uh, we have another member who is like, I wish they could have a average year to try it, but he's like, we also can't control mother nature. And he doesn't wanna see a child lose their life.
What's an average year on the Horicon Marsh? That's what I would like to know. I grew up here my whole life. I hunted that since I was twelve. There was never an average year on the Horicon Marsh. The federal government does not care what Hor, the City of Horicon thinks when they open their dam. They flood it when they want, they dump it when they want. They are not gonna call you and tell you when they dump it. You have a year in your eyes. I, I'm just saying, I'm stating the safety part. It's up to you guys to do. I don't think by any means I'm asking this program to go away. I think it's a good program. It's just not in the right location.
I agree. I'm just relaying the Parks Board members' voices, because they can't be here.
But I think if leaving the, the launch there isn't an issue as far as, because you're.
That was, that was installed in twenty seventeen. There were years of use that we didn't have any issue with that, correct? But, cause everyone owned their own kayak.
Right, people who have their own kayaks are probably.
And, and it was part of a grant, so I don't think that there's, I don't know what kind of latitude we have to, like, modify that or remove that.
And maybe we could get a new launch for the new location. It's, I mean, we've also been asked to do a meeting for.
That's, that is the City of Horicon's northernmost location that we own. So, you know, it would be out of our hands, like, if, if, I know the friends were kinda interested. We did a meeting with them. If they wanted to go to Chestnut or Nebraska, that's on them, then we would, you know, move it along. Because it's not on our property. We don't own those landmarks.
Being hard goes.
This, it was got to be in our.
I guess, how do we ensure all the involved parties with all very good knowledge and points all come together and work this out?
It sounds like we are having a meeting next month. Uh, so that will be a meeting where the minds will connect.
Right. Who decides who the lines are, yeah?
It's the four stakeholders. It's the city, the donor, the Friends of the Marsh.
So the ones Jerry talked about tonight, or, okay.
I think the whole, uh, program should be reevaluated myself. This program started, I mean, it was a good thing, but like, as we've discussed a few times here, anytime there's a gift, it sounds good at first, and after a while, it, it becomes solid. I have, um, Jerry's, uh, not, and I, Jerry, yeah, I thought a nice presentation. He had good ideas and everything like this, but, um, the danger, high water problem, uh, exists at more than this year. Go back, I think, uh, look at the rescue records, there are probably more, uh, rescue records, uh, and rescues uh, each year prior to this year. Uh, another point I would, I think, is part knowing that is, uh, when this decision was made, there was no, uh, land, uh, landing as far as there wasn't a full-time business operating that gave marsh doors. Uh, here, here's an opportunity for them to expand their business by, uh, having kayaks and being a sole source. And I like the fact that statement was made is that nobody has the control of the kayaks. If you don't have their, okay, if there's six of them there at, uh, twelve o'clock and the cop goes wrong, if he does check them, there's four gone, or they stole them, or they down the stream somewhere, or they up the marsh with some people in it, you know, for help and cop, you know, four miles away, and, I mean, if private industry would control it, would take on enough work off of the city.
So just to be clear, we, we don't need to, like, having the launch is a separate issue from free kayaks.
Absolutely. The launch is completely separate.
That clear as well. One, just because one goes away doesn't mean the other one, or just because the launch goes away.
Yeah, the launch is tied to the park. That's not the cop program.
The launch is gonna stay for people who own their own kayaks, but the free kayaks for, for, might go away, or, you know, that is a possibility. I definitely don't want the kayak program to go away. That's not the intent at all that I'm thinking of. I mean, I think we can reasonably try to live in continuous improvement and just, you know, we tried a program, it didn't work quite the way we had intended, and we just need to shift and try to do better. And we have a whole winter season to come up with some thoughts and plans and, and it would be great if we defined a group that would really support that and do, you know, but there's a lot of groups in town that are already overextended, so I've been, and I've been looking around for other groups too, but I found everyone that wanted to sponsor it yet, but I have all worked here.
Oh, you're right. It's a good point, you know, the bike program, it's no different. However, you know, we're fortunate to have your changes.
Yes.
That's, that's his life, so to speak, and I mean, he, he, uh, regulates it, monitors it, you know, repairs equipments, and so, you know, the city puts a little effort into that program for this year as well.
I think it's kind of over our heads. I mean, it's definitely over my head. I don't know enough about kayaks, too.
Yeah, from our meeting yesterday, too, uh, it sounded like they may be open to taking it on similar to how the road already does in Aprils. But that was a conversation down the road that needed to be as one.
Just wanna keep this, keep in mind that Horicon is the marsh. Riverbend isn't. It's too far out there. But we're, this is, we want to remove the marsh. We wanna put on Horicon and the marsh. I could see where we wanna move it. I totally understand, totally. But I sure would like to see a landing on the marsh, or keep it this side of the dam somewhere.
I, I guess, like, like you said about the time when I was wanting your, if you all wanna save them, I think it's a cool program. It's just the location may not be suitable. A, and I would agree that, you know, Horicon is tied in with the marsh, but you also have a lot of economy south of the marsh down to Lake Sinesippi. There's a ton of activity out there.
You know, we're Horicon.
No, but that's still part of us. We're still, we're still Lake Sinesippi, too. We're attached to that basin.
Not real. We're known for the marsh. I have to argue on that one, but.
I'm not disagreeing that we're known for, but I mean, you have commerce in both directions, but, and safety.
Yeah. I.
What I'm saying is the motion is that we are looking to pull the.
Move kayaks out of Bowling Green Park due to safety concerns to a location to be determined.
I'll second that up.
It's already got a second.
It's got, yeah, we're motioned up. At this point, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to call a vote.
So everybody just heard that? There is a motion to move kayaks out of Bowling Green Park due to safety concerns to a location to be determined. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
All right, moving on, we got action on an application for a temporary Class B retailer's license from the Phoenix for Kiwanis Park on September fifteenth. Marie?
So move for the farm to be open later?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, if not, clerk, please call the roll.
It's a motion to approve a temporary Class B retailer's license to Horicon Phoenix Program for use in Kiwanis Park on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Next is an action on the CDBG dash PF Grant Administration Professional Services Agreement. Forrest?
Make a motion to approve the CDBG PF Grant Administration Professional Service Agreement in the month of thirty-six alpha nine. I'll second.
Any, any discussion?
This is, this is for, um, another grant like we had done before.
This is, uh, for the one million dollar grant that we received for the Cedar Street. Was it Cedar or what?
All right, we got a motion in a second from Jim. If there's not any further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Next, we have an action on placement of bicycle safety signage at the bicycle program rack locations. Bryce?
So move.
There is examples in your packet. They're just not as pretty as black and white.
All right, no further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Motion to accept the donated bicycle safety signage and locate signage at bicycle program rack locations. Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Next is acting on the City of Horicon's bicycle program policy. Bryce?
So move.
I'll second.
Oh, just to follow up with some context on this, this was a policy the former D W director started, but never made it to the finish line, so when Cody and I started looking at this, we figured out we needed to get this to the finish line. We have a program without the policy for it.
All right. No further discussion. Clerk, please go ahead.
This is a motion to approve the City of Horicon Bicycle Program Policy as distributed in the council packet. Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Next is acting on the City of Horicon's kayak program policy. Bryce?
So move.
Second.
I'd like to see if this is something that we wanna wait for condition to figure out what the location is gonna be. Yeah, you'd have the location actually in this. So I think it's gonna have to wait, and then if we're, and our responsibilities will lie in the center of city property.
Yes.
Well, there's already a motion in a second.
I can't move my motion. Does, do we have it for now?
No, there's already a motion in a second here.
I tried to catch you, I was gonna catch you before you said something. We gotta be quick here on that.
All right, clerk, just go to the roll.
It's a motion to approve the City of Horicon Kayak Program Policy as distributed in the council packet. Bryce Remy.
No.
Forrest Frommey.
No.
Lisa Sullivan.
No.
Jim Banzma.
No.
Marie Fenske.
No.
Christine Schmitz.
All right, next we have. All right, next we have the act on the acceptance of a donation of a canoe.
So move.
Second.
So I got that.
We've got room, though. The ones that are broken.
That kind of goes against the exact point.
Where is it going? Where are you going to get room? Where?
Where the other ones are.
Public safety building.
Where are they? I don't know. Where are they, Cody?
They're in the hamburger stand on the park.
Oh.
But what, but where?
Where is this new canoe going to go?
Yeah, parked.
Well, it's gonna be parked until we decide what to do.
I don't know.
I assume it's gonna go where the other ones are until we're ready to figure out where we're gonna put a launch.
Well, one, I said, one. Are the canoes in the state launch that the kayaks on?
We don't have any canoes right now. This would be the first canoe.
Oh, it is the first canoe?
This was, a resident reached out. The mayor commented on Facebook. So then I brought this to council. I was, it was a question.
It is in good condition for actually.
Yeah.
We completely wobble less than I I just moved in my first kayak recently and wobbled.
Only if you're not talented.
So Cody, do we have somewhere to store this until we decide if I need what's more on what?
Yeah. And we're gonna be able to supplement the new one through the kayak program to get it to its place.
And if the people take the kayak program, maybe they only want the kayaks and not the canoe, and then we're gonna have the canoe.
Yeah, that's one, that's one for you to vote for.
I don't know why you're.
Maybe it's one of the new, it's not like seven.
Another three gifts or they don't want to.
That's why you can vote. You can say yes or no. There aren't any comments. Clerk, please call the roll.
It's a motion to accept the donation of a canoe with two paddles from Matthew. I'm not, yeah, I'm sorry, multiple syllable stroke. I can't say that kind of words. Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
No.
Lisa Sullivan.
No.
Jim Banzma. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
No.
All right. The no's had it. So number twenty, acting on a street use permit application from the Horicon Historical Society for the Use of Winter Street.
So move.
I'll second.
So this basically just extends.
What are they using it for?
For industry days.
So.
Oh, wait, there's a caveat.
Right, I just wa- I, right, I do think that you might want to ask Lonnie Nye a few questions because I know I asked her prior to the meeting. Usually they um have a few different weekends in which they're requesting the street use permit and the application looked a little different. So I talked to her before the meeting and so Lonnie, share the new vision.
So my vision is to create a more um destination event versus people can buy tickets and show up to tickets. I want to create more festive feeling. And we would be the goal for that to create um our, our vision for the future is to create like a video maze as well as picture floral opportunities, public and parking and stuff, and that would all take place in the road. In this case, we need to, if you had a time to set it up. And then it would be left up throughout the highest peak of the season and then you can remove that last bit.
How would that impact the, the residents around?
There are nobody none.
Zero.
It's a standard. Doesn't affect the parking lot, it doesn't affect. But there would be stuff that would remain in the street throughout that, that time.
Cody has already signed off on this. Um I don't know that the interim police chief has had an opportunity to see this because I think I don't know that I saw this application, I think. Like late, late last week, and so it went right onto this council agenda. So I can't say for certain that first that those had an opportunity to review it yet.
Lonnie, are you also looking for reimbursement?
Yes.
But that'll have to be a separate.
That's a separate thing, okay. So that later she'll write a letter and ask.
Well, it's on this letter, but it'll be on another agenda.
Please go.
Okay, this is a motion to approve a street use permit for the Horicon Historical Society for Use of Winter Street, October eleventh through November fourteenth, twenty twenty four, for their uh annual haunted history tour. Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
All right, next. Next is reviewing and discussing the Marshall and Crossing signage and Gateway Business Park signage.
Ben, take it away.
Two and three minutes.
Six.
Two and a half years. Okay. Um so in twenty twenty uh we did a West Washington Street corridor plan. As part of that plan, um and as part of the tip for ending of its spending period, we came up with some ideas. And one of those was a new sort of welcome to Horicon type of sign. Uh and so that was within the plan. Uh we actively pursued that over the past couple of years and it has not yet come to fruition for a variety of reasons. But with the new infrastructure out of Marshman Crossing, our tech is uh opening, has been a grand opening next month. Uh they would like to have some sort of sign on thirty-three. It naturally makes sense that there would be some sort of this is the city of Horicon Business Park kind of signage at that entryway to Ruffey. The thought is, do we want to potentially combine a, this is Marshman Crossing, welcome to city of Horicon, all on that same sign? Or do we want to potentially have a sort of welcome to Horicon sign at the far west end of that business park area and then have the business park sign at the Ruffey Road? If you remember, there's two stubs that go into the property right now. Uh one aligns with the town road, uh Oak, I think it is. And then uh the other one is Ruffey that has the infrastructure. Oh, sorry. So basically what we're thinking is um not pursuing the sign on thirty-three in the general area by Dollar Tree. But instead, we're already planning to do some sort of business park sign and with marine arch tech on it and future tenants on it. We want to combine those two into one. Uh or do we want to have potentially two signs out there to be like your gateway and entryway to work on as you come in uh off of thirty-three? There's obviously cost ramifications associated with this. Uh and there are a couple of different designs uh that we've solicited some generalized numbers from some sign openings out to give you guys a ballpark understanding of what we're talking about. Most likely, these would be funded via the T five um in terms of the implementation. Uh but we want to get a direction from this group because we've sort of wop, been spinning our wheels for a long time about what we should do. And we want to get something in the ground, especially because um marine arch tech is, is gonna be open soon and they, they want some kind of sign.
And it would, it'd be cheaper to us upfront than putting it on short figures land because it is gonna come out the tit.
Yeah, if we put it out um sort of by Dollar Tree in that general area or Dollar Tree, you know, whatever it is, you got it down. Then yes, the tit is now closed, then we don't have to, or not closed, but the spending cannot be relied there anymore.
How much distance between the two?
So um.
I don't, I don't know my, I don't know my deep miles.
Well, a quarter mile in it. Between the two entrances out there by Marshall Crossing? Not that much even. Can't be even that long.
Maybe a couple hundred feet.
Yeah.
Will they be on the same side of the road?
Yeah, because we, we own the property on the north side of the road all already.
It's a pretty good, you know, this one's there.
Four thousand feet between the two sites.
Four thousand?
All the entries to.
The two entries into Marshall.
Oh, sixteen, seventeen hundred feet.
Quarter mile. Okay, yeah, okay, that's what we.
It, both signs would be eligible to be funded out of T five. T five has enough money to take more, so.
When we had that discussion, I guess it just kind of popped in my head that one day when I was talking, just you two is just that's where Horicon actually starts.
We did, we did have a discussion too. The amount of money that's left for the original sign, we talked about it. There is not enough.
That was the other part, yeah.
The sign happened on Fred's property. We don't know what price without going like fully into this and spending some engineering money, but the, the guesses that I got from MSD was.
Quite honestly, the smooth talking that I have to give to the auditors to let them know that that was an eligible expense this year would be a lot. Not impossible, just a lot.
Cody, would the, would the intent be then to take down like our old school welcome to Horicon sign with all the service organization signs on it?
Up to you guys. I, I don't have.
I never even thought it came in at all.
Okay, so that would stay, just because I think that's.
And this would also, just for council, would make it, it would make it easier than trying to have to deal and the stuff with Fred's land too. This is just land that the city already owns.
The, the, the numbers that came off, we talked about and they were pretty comfortable with for like a hundred thousand or more. I think we only had around forty.
But you have not even a fraction of that.
Never mind that.
So everyone, one sign or two sign?
That's pretty much it.
Wow. Great. Isn't that the next sign?
Yes.
Well, I just. Christine just wanted to put her feelings out there, because we know for what she wants.
Yeah, why do you like two signs?
Because I really like this. I really, I think the city of Horicon sign is very nice and really focuses on just the city of Horicon.
No, I get it. I'm just curious.
I think the business park sign should really just focus on the business park. I really think each sign should have its own focus. By having two of them, they do. I feel like having one sign is kind of
kind of rolling in, yeah.
Kind of cheap. And then you can have one that's stone, one that's metal, and they would look, they give a different feel. All right, well.
Just my cheap one and a half cents.
All right, well, that kind of, I mean, there wasn't any action on that. That was review and discuss. I know we can make a number twenty-two here. Um if someone wants to make a motion on the Marshall Crossing Gateway and Business Park signage, that'd be great.
I'll make a motion to go out.
I'll second.
Two separate signs.
Do you have preference on metal or just stone?
I think um, I think stone for the welcome to Horicon and a metal for the business. Yes, that's what I said. I agree.
Yeah.
And that was metal.
For the, for the business, I got stone for her. All right, is there any further discussion on the uh motion that was made by Bryce? And enhanced by Forrest. Okay, if not, clerk, please call the roll.
So this is to pick option two with two signs, uh business park to have a metal sign, city of Horicon sign to be stolen. Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Next, I'm gonna agenda the operator licenses. Marie.
Make a motion to approve a two-year operator license for Catherine Powell.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Next, we're acting on the financial statement for July. Forrest.
We approve the July twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Next, we're acting on the bills for July. Forrest.
Uh make a motion to approve the July tables in the amount of one million, two hundred fifty-five dollars. Sorry, two hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
You have a motion. I'll just make a motion to adjourn us in the closed session. Okay, all right, I need a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt. Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Sorry.